Build team so that we can be as productive and effective as we can as leaders. So I'm excited to work through this protocol tonight with all of you. And I appreciate the opportunity to be here. So compass points, and Josh, before you leave is...
I want to go to the top one.
Okay, all right, just the presentation, sorry. So through this protocol, we want you to think about your preferred actions when working with a team. All right, so think about this tonight in terms of you're working with a team or you're working with the board. Many times you'll have a different preference when you're working with, say, your family. So tonight, we're going to think about a work context and the board context as you're thinking through this. So it's sort of similar to a Myers-Briggs, but it's specifically around tendencies that really affect our working interactions. So I'm going to describe the four compass points, and then I'm going to ask you to take just a minute to think about which one best describes your working behaviors. So for the north compass point, that's the person who just wants to take action. Can we stop talking about it and get busy? Can we just do it? Even if we don't have a clear path yet, let's just get started and we'll figure it out. Our south folks are the ones who really want to make sure before we get started that every voice has been heard, that everyone is on board, they're take sort of that facilitative stance at leadership. They help to negotiate to make sure everyone is kind of prepared and ready and emotionally ready to take on the process. Our east folks are our visionaries. They need to clearly understand the why and the big picture before they're able to get started and how it really connects to the purpose of the organization. Our west folks are really detail oriented. Before they're ready to get started, they need the plan. So where our east folks need the vision, our west folks want to know who, what, when, where, why. They are going to be super organized and keep us on track and remind us when we're together. All right? So I'm going to pass out some additional resources to unpack this more from an educational lens. But while I do that, I want you to think about which compass point...
Mary, you're going to have to back up. I'm sorry.
Which compass, I knew this was going to be an issue for me to stand still, sorry. Which compass point best describes you in terms of your preferences as a team member? I'm going to pass this out and then I'll come back. All right, when you're ready to share, don't share yet, just give me a thumbs up.
I do have a question.
Okay. That is a great question. We know that effective leaders are actually a great combination of all four compass points, right? But what do you prefer, like the one that you most gravitate to in your working interactions? I am going to make you choose one. Pick the one that's most dominant for the purpose of this activity.
You said likely good leaders are all of them, but for the purpose of the day, that's not the case.
If you got to choose in your working interactions, which one is most dominant for you?
Can I just remind you that none of your audience's captured or others might not be able to hear you? It's important on your mind when you want to speak, just like if you're sitting there. I think there's a problem, Josh, if they leave them all alone. You got that?
Not, I don't think it will be now, but it's possible that we could get some kind of feedback issue. We're going to leave them off.
All right. So I'm going to call on you one at a time to share your compass point, and then we'll kind of dig into what this might mean. All right, Ms. Henson.
Well...
Well, I don't like having to choose one, to be honest. That's, but if I had to... Okay, I'm going to tell you that I am southwest, but because I have to choose tonight, I'm going to say west.
All right, Ms. Garrus.
Yeah, I'm going to choose west.
Okay. Mr. Oswald.
My point on life, I think I'm east.
Interesting comment.
The point is you can bring that up.
Uh huh, but now you get to...
Different season of life, yeah.
Yep. All right, Mr. Anderson.
I've got to say exactly what Tim said. I used to be north, but now I'm more east.
All right, Dr. Little.
I feel like I'm all over the map.
She said that's a sign of a good leader.
That's right, well, maybe, hopefully, right? Um, I don't know, I would probably say I am south if I had to pick one.
All right, Ms. Green.
North.
That's two for north.
Okay.
West.
Well, here is the good news. Every compass point is represented on this team, right? So that's, that's good news. We don't have one missing. I've given you a list of questions now that you've thought about which compass point you are. And as promised, I also gave you kind of a list of descriptions of each compass point from an educator's perspective. So you'll see at least one bullet that describes each compass point that's sort of from that teacher stance. But that'll give you an idea more of sort of the description of each. But I've also given you a list of questions for individual reflection. And I'm going to start with about eight minutes and then check in and see if you need more time. And I want you to think about the strengths of the style that you indicated. Then I want you to think about the limitations of that style. And again, we're talking about in terms of group interactions. I want you to name the style that you find most difficult to work with and why. Like when you're working on a team, who's the one that's getting on your nerves the most? What do people from the other directions or styles need to know about you? Like if you could just tell everybody else in the group what your needs are, what would that look like and sound like? And then what do you value about each of the other three styles? Right, so you have a place to take some notes about that. And we're going to take about eight minutes, and then I'll do a time check.
Will you go back to that compass heading with the slides? That may help. So I think the questions are on here.
Mm-hmm, they are. All right, that's about eight minutes. Does anybody need more time? All right, we're going to make our norths wait until last this time. See how that settles with them. All right, let's start with our visionaries, our east folks. As you reflected, what are some things that stood out about that style? What are your strengths? What are your limitations? So it's Mr. Anderson or Mr. Oswald? For the east compass point, yes.
Okay, I can barely hear you, I'm sorry.
Okay, for the east compass point, what were some of the takeaways from your reflection? What stood out about your strengths or limitations? We'll start there.
From...
From the east perspective.
From east. I use words like destination, a goal, a direction, a final product.
Absolutely, so we, with our, when we have the east person on our team, we're going to probably have a clear goal, a clear vision, and potentially a plan. We need our west folks for that too, right? What are the limitations of the east style?
Slow to start.
Can be slow to start, yes. Dr. Little tells me all the time that planning is the illusion of action, and eventually we have to get started with the acting, right?
I've seen that.
So we have to, to be careful that we don't get stuck there in that place of vision. All right, which other compass point frustrates you the most or do you find most difficult to work with on a team and why?
Probably north.
All right, why is that?
Authority. Go figure.
You might feel like they're being authoritative, maybe?
Mr. Anderson, do you have your iPhone?
I do.
It's on, it's picking them up.
What about you, Mr. Oswald? Who do you find most, what other compass point do you find most difficult to work with?
Probably west, because a lot of times I've got the details and all those little answers and questions in my head, and I just kind of hate to sit through here and that again, but I...
All right.
That's just me.
I understand. All right, what do you, what do you value about some of the other styles?
Well, I think they're all important. Let's see.
Anything...
I think for south in particular, it makes people feel included, important, needed, worth. West, I put more clear throughout, more defined. And north kind of drives the initiative towards a goal, not necessarily... It just keeps things working, I guess.
Is there anything that you feel like sort of misunderstood about being an east that the others need to know about you?
I think probably as an east person, I tend to jump ahead of other folks and getting ahead of myself and ahead of the group. Probably guilty of that.
All right, so that would be important for them to know that about you and be able to check you on that and say, let's step back a minute and talk about what comes first and have a plan. All right, thank you. All right, let's go, let's go next to west. So we had three people who were west, one that was sort of southwest. We made her choose west, but Ms. Henson, Ms. Garrus, and Dr. Geiton. So tell us a little bit about what you feel are your strengths and limitations of being that compass point.
Okay, I'll start. I think, I think the three things that I wrote down are detail oriented and thoughtful, like we think through the process and the details of that. And then inquiry, I think as an educator, that's just a big word for me. Just curious. Next.
So I had, in addition to kind of what was up there, which I didn't realize I was writing down at the time, but two things I would add would be reliable. I think, you know, people who tend towards the west side tend to be, you can always kind of count on them to have the information, if you will, or to have thought through it. Not that the others don't, but that's just kind of their bent, I guess. And just very deliberate in, in how, you know, how we're moving forward.
Do you want to add anything, Ms. Garrus?
I had a couple to say that Kathy had. I had inquisitive and detailed, and also informed and organized.
What about limitations to that style?
Sometimes we can be less flexible.
Okay.
Or I shouldn't say we, wrong pronoun, sometimes I can be less flexible.
Are there limitations?
I had confrontational, oftentimes can be perceived as confrontational, emotionless, and exhausting.
I don't like those words.
Exhausting from the sense that it's kind of like you start running down this rabbit hole and you start peeling back the layers. You know, you start peeling back the onion, and it's like, well, now I need to think about this. Now I need to think about that. And so it, it just, it gets tiring.
For you or other people?
Both.
Okay. Do you have anything to add, Ms. Garrus, about limitations?
I had another, it was impatient. But as Kyle said, it could also be seen as emotionless, because I know down here, where it said the one that I find most difficult to work with, I felt it was south because they spend too much time holding people's hands when we could be getting busy. So that could be seen as being emotionless.
Do you think that's being misunderstood by others? Do you think that, that you could be seen as emotionless, as a misunderstanding by others?
No, I think it's just time to get busy.
All right, and so you got into that a little bit, the compass point that you find most difficult to work with. Ms. Henson, Dr. Geiton, did y'all have anything different for that one?
Um, well, when I look at this, I feel like as a mom, I'm north. As a friend, I'm south. As a team member, I'm west. So I'm least like east. So I wouldn't necessarily say that they're difficult to work with. I'm just least like that group.
Sure, sure. All right, let's go next to our south. We only have...
Which one, hang on, which one did he say for? Yeah, we're not getting off the hook, which one do you think's most difficult?
For the most difficult to work with?
Yeah.
I had north, just from the simple fact that I think inherent within all of these are leadership styles. And, and I think north and west tend to be very similar in leadership styles. And we all know what happens when you get, to me chefs in the kitchen, somebody eventually gets cut, you know? And so I, I think that's the, the take home for me.
Good.
All right, Dr. Little, our only south.
Well, what's funny is, is I think maybe through the process of this, I've talked myself into maybe I'm east. But, but for the, for the sake of this argument, I'll go ahead and, and continue to be south for the next few minutes. I think some of the strengths of the southern hemisphere, or direction at least, inclusive, collaborative, culture focused and caring, and I think those are the types of traits that lead to long-term organizational health in, in terms of leadership. And you are successful over time. Some of the, some of the limitations is that can be messy and inefficient. So just to give you an example, you know, we're going through our chief academic officer process right now. It's messy, it's not, it's not easy just to, I mean, the easy thing would be to say, okay, you're the next chief academic officer, move on to the next thing. But we're, we're really going through a process, and that process is unwieldy, it's time consuming, it just... You know, now we believe it's going to result in a, in a great pick, but getting to that can be a little sloppy sometimes. Styles you find most difficult to work with? You know, I thought west is probably the one, just because, I don't know, I mean, I think, because I would, I would probably tell you my wife is a little bit west and a little bit north. So that, that's kind of weird, but maybe that's what makes our marriage work, right? You got details and big picture and that kind of thing.
I was thinking the same thing, yeah.
So I mean, I don't know, it's, it's, it's the one I have the least in common with sometimes, I think. I don't know if it's difficult to work with, but certainly least in common. I think what other people need to know about me as a style is that, at least for me, it's important that the team works, that the team works well together, and that the team then also has each other's best interest at heart. So it's not so much that the team works well, because the team can work well and maybe, or the, the team can create products that, that don't necessarily reflect the idea that they have each other's best interest at, at heart. And I would say, again, what do you value about the three styles? My wife is probably more of a west or a north, and I really value those elements of detail, and I like to value the elements of action. I'm probably more a southeast, meaning that if I did not have, and it's why I hire different people on my team to... I don't need a whole bunch of south and east. What I need are some different folks, because the details matter, and some of that action matters too, kind of continues to push them. So, but like east, I think I value the more big picture conceptual thinkers, those kinds of things with that as well.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. The south is the most misunderstood of all of the compass points typically. Any guesses about why that might be?
Because the rest of us don't care about feelings.
That's sort of it. No, 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 that's not it. But it's like there's, there's the perception that it's too much time caring about feelings and the emotional aspect of the work, and because it is so time consuming to do that, right? And so oftentimes, people get the most frustrated with that south compass point.
So I work with a lot of medical directors in the hospital, and I tell them that leaders are constantly either building relationships or getting tasks done. And sometimes in order to get a task done, you lose in a relationship space. What's weird about healthcare versus banking and business and some other fields is that typically people don't move around. So like my dad was a manufacturer, so he could burn through a bunch of relationships to get results and tasks done, because five years later, he was moving to a new plant. He was a plant manager of Peachtree Doors instead of Square D out on Sumpert Highway. So, but in healthcare, sometimes, like I have to tell my boss, I can't get that done, because it's going to burn this relationship. And to Greg's point, that relationship trumps the task every day.
Right.
So that's, that's kind of, so I think people that are more south and kind of build and grow relationships. But the other, the flip is true, is you can have all the great relationships in the world, but if you get nothing done, you ain't a leader.
Right.
So I mean, you could be most loved person on the team, but, so I mean, it's a balancing act.
Absolutely, and that's why I'm really excited tonight that all four compass points are represented here. So we'll go to our north folks. Give us a description of your strengths and limitations first.
So I said my strengths were effects, focused on effects and results, or effects, results, and creates options, because by actions, and you create new options. It also is also one of the limitations, because for every action you take, you close down options. So it's a catch 22 based upon what's the best solution. I do challenge the status quo. A coach I worked with probably six years ago, she challenged me and said, Brent, you're drawn to change for the sake of change. So I do get excited and push the change effort, but also sometimes, you know, change isn't the best thing. So you've got to guard against that. I tend to move others to action, and then generally when you see someone working, it makes you get out of your chair and work. So it generally motivates other people to work harder by being a north, which ultimately gets results, so. But with that, I'll just do the limitations.
Go ahead.
It can lead a team or myself to be short sighted. So I was meeting with a group today, and I've learned at the end of meetings to always ask the question, what did I miss? What else do we need to consider? What is something that was not said? Has everyone had a chance to speak? Because it allows, sometimes I've learned... Because it allows, sometimes I've learned a muscle through an issue where I should have given people space to think. And then sometimes there'll be, today there wasn't, but other days will be, oh, have we thought about this? And no one will have. And so it kinda catches that. And with that, it doesn't always allow others to have their full or complete input. And then again, it can be perceived as rude or brash when you're driven to action. So, because you didn't take others' people's feelings and where they're coming from, and their, their struggles and their difficulties into account, so...
What do you wanna add to that, Ms. Green?
Similar items. For strengths, actually, I had put goal-focused, and then I scratched out goal and put completion. That's one of the things I find trips myself up sometimes, is I just, I want to cross the finish line. And sometimes, maybe that's not, I'm rushing that, just being to be done with it. But having big goals, being tireless, I think, just having that, that, the energy that you, for yourself, but also kinda sharing it with the team, just to try to get everybody to move and keep moving, and to get everybody moving in the same direction. I feel like that's one of the strengths. I actually had a lot more limitations than strengths listed, because when you're doing an exercise like this, it's easier to, like, oh, yeah, I see that now. But some of the limitations are impatience, just general bossiness. Yeah, can you believe it? Tendency to, coming across as a know-it-all, just wanting to say, you know, we, we've got this, let's, let's just go and we'll figure it out, you know? And, you know, I, I can see where we're going, you know, just trust me. And as part of that, sometimes like, feeling like you've gotta be the one that carries the football, and not sharing that, not only the load, but also the details and changes, you know, kinda forgetting that there are people running behind you. And that, and along with that, kinda sometimes forgetting, because you're focused on the goal, forgetting to look to see everybody else's with you, or if you've lost them along the way, so that's one of the limitations, so...
All right, I appreciate the honesty with which you guys approached this too, because it's interesting now to, to know these things about each other. Now that you know the distribution of the compass points across this board, what does it mean for you? What does knowing this mean?
I think it brings a little bit of understanding, certainly. More understanding about how folks think and reflect on things. And I think it brings some respect for others, other people's thoughts and views.
In addition to understanding and respect, how else can this serve you as a board, to know this about each other?
Well, and I think it, it gives you kind of a good perspective on, like, when, you know, in conversations, you know, about policies or issues or whatever, that, that we're, we're each coming... Our goal is the same, you know, to empower each child to design their future. But our, our perspective, what, what, the way we see that is different, because we're looking at it through the lens of our, of the, not only our experiences, but also the way we're wired to, you know, to want to peel back the layers, to understand, you know, the, the financing and, or, you know, to understand the, the levels of the iterations of a policy change. And then some, you know, we're like, okay, well, you know, this was recommended, let's just go. Let's just, let's just, I mean, I think it, 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 it's enlightening to, to understand that we are, that our points of view are genuine. And I think that sometimes we forget that, that, you know, even though we don't... I would never expect us to all, all agree all the time, that doesn't necessarily mean that, that Dr. Guyton's point of view isn't coming from a position of just genuine interest in details that I can't possibly start to think about, because they're not in my... They're just not in, in my brain, in my headspace. So I think that, that's, I'm extremely helpful for them.
It could be that you've even made assumptions about intent from time to time that have now been explained through understanding where someone else is coming from. So after tonight, when you go on about your lives, what do you wanna remember about this experience as you continue to serve as a board member for Lexington District One?
Well, I wanna say that, you know, as Dr. Little, as our superintendent, and the guy, you know, the fact that he identifies as the, the caring and nurturing, to me, that, I just think that's wonderful, because, I mean, not that he, you know, he isn't, you know, just teaming with, with leadership and get-it-done-ness, but you couldn't possibly be in this job and not just quake under that responsibility if you didn't, if the heart wasn't there for the, the kids and the students and the teachers and the staff. So I, I mean, I think that was, I was very surprised, actually, so...
What I, it's interesting what you learn from different points in your life. So the recession of '08, '09, I had a family member who lost a lot financially. And what I learned is that his style was more of a growth style, and so when there was a downturn coming, he, for right or wrong, couldn't recognize it and hunker down and put controls in place to prevent harm, you know, to he and his family. So, for example, you, I didn't get to what style do you find most difficult to work with? But for me, it's the East, because you speculate about all these possible outcomes, and especially when people perseverate about negative outcomes, I just, they lose me. I just can't sit there and talk about the what-ifs and the negative this, and are we sure we're making the right decision? But yet, if someone had done that a year ago about the pandemic, we would have been a lot more prepared, so... So I think what I'm constantly reminded of is in the organization, whether it's your leadership team or your board, you need members that represent all the perspectives, because the organization will face different stresses over its tenure. And it, it really isn't about Brent as Lexington Board, or even Lexington Board. It's about Lexington School District. And the board's just a small piece of that, and the leadership team's just a small piece of that, and the teachers are just a small piece of that. So you gotta have that complement of perspectives, because you really don't know what the market's gonna throw you. And so, you know, I wish someone from the East had said, what about a global pandemic that would make us shut down schools? How would we do that? I think all of us would have laughed, but we wouldn't laugh today, so...
Anything else going forward that you wanna remember about this experience as a board? All right, well, thank you for your time this evening, and I hope this has been meaningful and something you can continue to think about.
Thank you.